Alrighty, it's 5:00 PM. We'll go ahead and open the 2025 budget hearing. At this time, do any members of the public wish to address the board or with concerns, comments, anything about the budget? Alright, seeing no public or nobody raising to our attention, do we have a motion to close the budget hearing?
So moved.
Okay, alright, been properly moving second that we close the budget hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. Alright, so we've already called the order. Roll call, Mr. Barton.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Freshair.
Here.
Dr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Chapman.
Here.
Dr. Manning.
Here.
Good to go. Pledge of allegiance.
Dr. Manning will lead us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we are to the budget review process for board members, the work session. So, Dr. Manning.
Give me one second and I'll get this.
You're going too fast.
That's right.
Weird thing looks short.
Dr. Witty this evening. He's very witty this evening.
Sharp pencil for a workshop.
Okay, uh, we do, we do this budget workshop every year and this is just a little training, so you guys are familiar where all the pots of money are at and just can stay up to, to date on the way we do accounting. This budget presentation is called Developing a School and District Budget in West Virginia. And of course, the organization of this is, the Gummer County Board of Education is the corporation created under the authority of the West Virginia Code 1851 and is composed of five board members nominated and elected in each county. So what we're going to do today is look at a little bit of the code, how the code interacts with the budget, the budget process, the revenue sources, state aid, monitoring fiscal conditions, and summary. So, 189B17, "The County Board of Education and County Superintendent shall comply of instructions of the State Board of School Finance and shall perform the duties required of them in accordance with the provision of this article." So this sets forth in state code what we have to do to make the budget process work. And 18410, "The County Superintendent shall act as the Chief Executive Officer of the County Board and under the direction of the State Board execute all of its educational policies." So, and some of these policies require funding and sources and things like that. The treasurer, CFO, um, is outlined in 1896. The treasurer is the fiscal officer of the, uh, of the board and, um, it's commonly designated, this is the person in charge of the financial affairs of the county board. The Board of Education do their monthly meetings, they get their updates, they constantly get, uh, checks on, um, the budget and, and the funds and things like that. The superintendent with an administrative degree, they oversee the management of the school system and is the secretary of the board. The treasurer, usually business degree, who provides guidance and reports to the superintendent on matters related to the financial picture of the school system. And of course, there's other stakeholders here that we have. Sometimes it's administrators or employees or public that make an impact on the budget. The budget process, um, "All Boards of Education within West Virginia are required by statute to prepare an annual budget and levy rate estimates on prescribed forms and submit these for approval." Budgets are presented on the modified accrual basis of accounting for all government funds. The following procedures are followed in preparing. And you'll see some of these look familiar because we just completed some of these processes. Uh, the, the school board is required to hold, uh, me, hold meetings or meetings between the 7th and 28th days of March to ascertain its financial condition, which we did, and determine the amount that is to be raised from the levy of taxes for the fiscal year commencing July 1, which we did. Um, the school board adjourns the meeting and submits the scheduled proposed levy rates to the state auditor's office for approval. The school board then reconvenes its meeting on the 3rd Tuesday of April to formally lay the approved levy. If you guys remember, we did that at, uh, the Career Center, our meeting that we held there. The school board is also required to submit its proposed budget for the subsequent year to the State Board of Education for approval by the date established in the budget calendar. The school board is required to hold a public hearing on the proposed budget before it's submitted for approval, which we just did. Um, the proposed budget must be made available for public inspection for at least 10 days before the public hearing is held. The revenue sources, um, most, this is pretty much the three main, uh, revenue sources that we have. We have a local revenue source here, uh, with our local levy funds. We have state revenue, um, coming in based off student population and then federal dollars that flow in. Our local revenue source, our regular levy, Fund 11, which I'll explain what these funds are, you'll see the, the, the number there, uh, 2,467,000. And the excess levy fund, Fund 12, of 1,001,017,000. So, the legislature sets the regular levy rates, um, and the statutory requirements and the timeline and the local share requirements. State revenue sources. State aid is driven by enrollment and supplemented for counties under 1,400, so, um, we're adjusted by 413 students. Our total state aid is 6,843,920. Our PEIA and RHBT is 1,450,529. Our CPRB in retirement is 513,056. Our unfunded liability is 1,191,166. And in our unrestricted state grants, you'll see that we got that 733,000 in unrestricted state grants. State and federal restricted revenue sources, these are, of course, restricted funds, uh, most, uh, projected based on the prior year allocation and/or reduced from the prior year, um, per the West Virginia Department of Education. Fund 61, uh, totals 1,934,573. And those things that are included in that are special education, Title 1, 2, um, child nutrition, CTE, other restricted grants. That 71, you remember, we used to have money in 71, that was what we, everybody called the COVID funds, and it's, it's really no, no longer being used. So the state aid funding is based off enrollment. Enrollment is the engine that drives all the state funding. The first month enrollment is in September, and then we have a data collection the second month in October. As of October, we had 720 students and we got funded, um, an additional set, uh, of 413 for a total of 1,132. So that's an adjustment that they do and they have a calculation based on sparsity. If you remember hearing about sparsity, it's all based off of, um, the size of your district and how many students you have and how sparse your area is. So your certified list is very important to have everybody in the certified list where they're supposed to be and what they're getting paid out of and those types of things. That's what drives the numbers to pull in of, of kind of, uh, those preliminary comps. So you can see every year, based on how many you had in, how many you had employed and what everybody was there for, and then what you're going to get based off the enrollment numbers to figure out how you can adjust your personnel. Preliminary and final computations are generated by the West Virginia Department of Office of School Finance. Preliminary usually available around December. Sometimes they get them out a little bit earlier into November. And then, um, the state, the state funding formula is based off of those. So this really dives into what the state funding formula is. You got step allocations. Step 1 is allocated for professional educators. So there's a, based off of your enrollment, uh, they give you a certain number that they put in step 1, and that's the amount that you get. Step 2, allowance for service personnel. Step 3, allowance for fixed costs. Step 4, allowance for transportation. Step 5, allowance for professional student support personnel. Step 6A, allowance for professional, um, personnel substitute cost. Um, step 6B, allowance for service personnel substitute cost. Step 6D, allowance for faculty sentence. Step 7A, allowance for the improvements of instructional programs. Step 7B, allowance for improvements in technology, uh, instructional technology. Step 7C, allowance for advanced placement or dual credit programs. Step 7D, allowance for teacher leader and induction and professional growth. Step 8, total basic program allowance. Step 9, local share, subtract 85% of local regular property tax levy, and step 10, basic state allowances for county boards. So each one of those pieces, um, in our fund accounting will have different numbers that we use and, um, they're coded to those different pots of money that we receive every year. Fund accounting is a system of accounting used for nonprofit entities to track the amount of cash assigned to different purposes and the usage of that cash. Each fund is like, I, this is my own language. Each, I, I, I try to relate this as it's kind of like each, each fund, each, each account code is kind of like its own individual bank account. And you'll see that Fund 11, okay, it has all of these different things in it. So you can see how much Fund 11 has in it. It's the majority. Fund 11 is our, our main fund. It's got steps 1 through 10, PEIA, retirement, unfunded liability, general liability. That's where our professional educators, um, service personnel, general expenses, that's where it, that's where all of that comes out of. Fund 12, kind of a separate pot, this is all of our local excess levy. So our local excess levy is put into Fund 12 and that would be, um, of course, it's restricted. It, it has, it has to be spent on certain things that the voters voted for, and those restricted funds are set aside for specifically those things. Um, Fund 51, SBA funds, approved projects, uh, capital projects, that's when you're putting money into something. It goes in there, doesn't come out, right, Ginger? It goes in, it stays right there, and that's, um, if you're, you know, building buildings, if you're doing things like that, you want to, you got to eventually put that money into Fund 51 and use it that way. That's also where if SBA gives you a grant, it goes into Fund 51 and it's, uh, locally restricted. It's, it's set aside for that. State grants and federal grants, um, child nutrition. You'll say, you'll see, special ed, you'll see those things in Fund 61. So if you see a, account code and it starts with 61, you'll know that that's what it's for. And then, of course, we had this one. I think I might take that one off of there next year. I don't think that there's much need to have that one on there unless.
It's like, it's like 30 years and some other.
Yeah. But this, this is what we use, the COVID funding or federal stimulus, it was restricted to. Expenditures, 80% of expenditures go to personnel. Superintendent makes recommendations. We also have fixed charges in those operations. You know, we have utilities, textbooks, supplies, equipment, maintenance, capital improvements, transportation, and a whole list of other things that we have expenditures on. So that leads us to fiscal year end. Um, this affects the budget of the next fiscal year. Annual financial statement, uh, it has to be developed, uh, with, from Code 189B9, 1893A. They're due 90 days after June 30th year end. So you really know what type of surplus deficits you have ni, within 90 days of that year-end date. You kind of got what you got left and you haven't filled any gaps and you have an X amount of dollars left. And that's, that's the, the quick and dirty to, um, the budgeting process and where our revenue comes from, and you'll be able to see now, looking at your budget, um, when you go down your budget, if you've got any specific questions, um, you'll be able to see and get some of those pieces hopefully answered from that presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Manning. At this time, Ginger, you can proceed.
So I did give you two different budgets, unfortunately, some preliminary, there were still wasn't a couple in that room, and I was trying to point those out over the wall, but you do have the new ones. We got four of those and it's neat when there should be copies of them as well. So I feel like the least confusing thing to do is start with the Fund 11 budget, which is not the first page. That'll be the second page that has the. Okay, so, um, I will go down through here and just highlight some areas that stand out to me, but feel free to jump in if there's something that stands out to you or we can do questions and whatever you want. So let me start by saying there was no salary increase for 26, that, that I think across the board raises or anything, but keep in mind that all our employees do still get an increment if they have less than 35 years of experience. Once you get above 35 years, those increments stop. But for professionals, that is $587 a year approximately, and for service, that's $320 a year. So some of these you'll see, you know, just had an increment raise. And then PEIA went up significantly. Most of the publicized rates, they said 14%, but based on my math, it's around 20% that we saw on our side. So like, you know, I looked at this one specific instance in here, it only has one employee in the line, so it's really easy to see, you know, exactly how much more that cost us. And this particular employee picked up family coverage from the prior year, so we're in probably $12,000 more than we were last year for that same employee, just because of the insurance. Okay, so the very first line there is a line we don't control. This is an amount that's given to us by the Department of Ed. You see this line twice a year, you see it in the budget, and then when I, um, when I do the transfer to get the money in the right lines at the end of the year, you'll see it again. This is retirement because it's not fully funded. They have pushed those liability amounts out to the districts. Um, and it is a very weird formula. I don't pretend to understand. It had actuarial values in there and everything, um, but this is something that's completely prescribed by them. We are required to budget on the expense side and on the revenue side. Also, the line that says for, or on behalf of charter schools is the same way. They tell us what number to put in there and it's budgeted on the expense side and the revenue side. So it's a complete zero effect, but it's required. It's part of the budget. Okay, so the next line is line, I think it'll be line 8 on yours. It's the salary benefits for regular teachers and aides. That was a significant increase, but this is where most of our staff are housed. If they teach any regular education courses, this is where they'll be. Um, we have added two interventionists since last year, so that's one of the reasons for the increase. We also had to add the pre-8s for third grade, so that's another reason that, that that line has increased. And thus, we got budgets last year. I didn't need to put no part of the budget that was done before it got here, so I did add those in their proper accounts, so you'll see some increases for those as well. Retirement and, um, insurance. We are required to budget at least as much as they're going to send us, so sometimes we have to make adjustments. This year we do not, so I've just left those lines in there because some years we will. Line 16 should be preschool teachers. I did move all of those into a different account number because we had someone in one, someone in another, just because it was easier to keep track of where they should be. So that's why there's no money budget there. You'll see it later on. We do have a medically fragile student that will be with us, that's with us this year. A small amount of time, but we'll be with us more time next year, so we had to add that line 19, which is, um, a contracted service for med, medical health, like an LPN, 5%. And they're already working with that child now, but we're handling that differently because they don't care very often. So we're taking that in a more full-time capacity next year. We increased the next line, the nurses' club line. Can you remember, we added that line last year because there was no place to help the nurses when they needed to replenish their stock? Because all that had been done out of COVID for a few years, so we had to put it in the budget, but we found during this year that we didn't have any place to charge our AED replacements, and those have to be replaced at a cycle because they're so expensive. You can't just go out and buy, you know, seven new ones all at once. So we did increase this line to, to have two new AEDs every year, and they have a plan. The nurses talked to me about it and they have a plan to cycle it, sort of, to keep them all up to date. Of course, they changed the batteries of the two and that goes in that line as well. Am I moving too quick? Okay. Line 23, Director of Destruction. We had to, um, we had a pretty significant reduction in our federal programs, so we had to move part of the federal programs director's salary to the county budget. Uh, this actually served two purposes because, as you know, she also helps us in a lot of other areas that would be a county function as opposed to Title 1 function. So it's kind of two birds, one stone. She got her in the right place and it helped free up enough money in those federal work budgets to balance. Um, I'm not sure why board members were budgeted so high last year. Unfortunately, you guys don't make a lot of money. I know one of the reasons was because we thought everyone was eligible for the increase and they weren't, so we did back that off, but it was just out of whack, so that's why that line is significantly different. We have an increase in attorney fees, which I'm sure no one is surprised, but a decrease in the amount that was allocated for the audit. So I true both of those figures up, uh, to get better, you know, a better handle on those lines, and we also charged the e-rate consultant to some other funding, so that line was wiped out. Board docs, there was a few of these software items that just weren't budgeted, so as the year went along and I, these requisitions crossed my desk, I just had to keep an ongoing list of things that needed to be added for this year, and you will see that a lot as you go through, but that was one of the things. That was our board docs are now diligent. That's that fee for them to house all of your documents. Two lines down from that is our annual policy updates. They weren't budgeted anywhere, so we, we fixed that. The postage machine, this was a change, um, with the Department of Education. They had us break down the fee to rent the machine versus the actual postage. We used to all burden it to one line, and so you'll see there, there was just, that got split out and that, you'll see that again in a minute because we had one at the high school as well, so that, theirs took the same thing. We didn't have a budget for power schools, so I had to add that. We didn't have a place to charge Dr. Manning's out-of-state travel, and he does attend that out-of-state conference every year at Euro 40, so I just rearranged those funds from out of county to out-of-state, more or less. And we did not have any supplies budgeted for their office, and, you know, there's a lot of things that they have to do out there, personal files, et cetera, so we had to put that one in there. And I just did rough estimate us on these because of what we had set this year, because they also want budgeted the prior year. You going to judge? You don't have questions? Okay, so, uh, line 44 should be liability insurance for your risk. They sent us a total of what it's going to cost us each year, and then we split it out into different allocations because we get some reimbursement if we charged it to the transportation program, but we can't charge all of it to the transportation program. It has to be reasonable. So these portions that you see here, that is because it's administrative. That's what this line means, is administration. Changes there. We didn't have a place for paper that we use around here, so I had to add that, and it was a small thing, but this is a required, and we have to do it every year. We have to be a member of things club so that our folks can go and get what they need, so they will be convenient, as well as CIS, those programs, and I hope that we can use it to help you there, and I don't think we do, but we could. There's a split out for the postage machine at the high school. School funds online, that is the E9 software that the schools use. That's actually a really reasonable amount, um, because their program does really well, or at least that's been my experience. Uh, we will no longer need contracted financial support because hopefully I don't need any additional help, and, uh, this roll right along too, so I think we're good there, so I'll just remove that from the budget. Last year custodians and maintenance were in the same account number, or two different account numbers, um, but both of them were maintenance, so I did split those out and made the custodians their own line because that's, I just thought that was important to have it separate. because that's, I just thought that was important to have it separate. One of the lines that were eligible for excess levy spending, I had to balance because I had never worked with an excess levy. So when I did last year's budget, I didn't know how that worked, like where we would charge some of these different things. So some of the items you'll see both here and levy, and then others you'll see just here or just levy. So I just tried to balance those out. It's going to take me a couple of years to really figure out exactly how much we spend on some of that stuff and where it should be budgeted. The electric bill is another one you'll see that I had in both places. So some of them you'll see reductions here and some you'll see reductions there. That property insurance amount there is the part related to the actual property that's on our grant bill. So that's why it gets bigger to like, uh, an operation.
Excuse me.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
So line sixty-five is where the, um, custodians and maintenance were charged, and now I just have the maintenance personnel in there. So that's, of course, because of that. Now with utilities and then with some things that you'll find in transportation, I am required to budget at least as much as the whole year prior. So what I was comparing to was that line twenty-four. So some of these lines, it seems like I've changed it significantly. A lot of it is just related to what was here today in that F Y twenty-four year, and we may not actually spend it all. Because it, well, some of them, I've looked at twenty-five, and it doesn't look like we're on track to spend that much. And a lot of that could just be the different account coding, because I have a coding things significantly different for various reasons. Things I found that I like to keep tracked up a little separately and other reasons. So like, for example, the disposal service fees, that's line sixty-eight. We, year-to-date, right now, this year, sixty-one thousand. So that was why there was a large increase there. We've been doing a whole lot of cleaning out, and that requires bigger dumpsters, and they're just expensive. Everything is expensive. So that's just part of the electric bill in line seventy-four. Uh, you'll see more of it in line eleven side. I took out the repair and maintenance of equipment line. Um, I believe that that one's just not one that we're using. It's up in some of those other lines. And I took out the pro officer because despite Dr. Money's mess efforts, we've been unable to make that happen so far. So of course, if we, if we end up being able to do it, we'll make it happen however we have to. Another one there that had one of the maintenance people that moved into a different code. Uh, bus drivers, most of that is insurance and their increments. That's line eighty-one. Sorry, but that, it told me which line. But I also did add the ALC line to that, and it's kind of expensive. So that's one reason it's a lot higher.
And Ginger, I don't know if you explained, the lines in green are money that's coming in, correct?
Those are the payroll ones.
Right.
Like they're, they came in from the payroll budget.
Payroll budget.
So, and it comes in in total. I mean, I can make it come in in detail to this, but there's really no need because we can't pay a salary without paying.
But all of those ones in green are salary, where we had payroll.
Exactly, yeah. It's all salary. You'll see some of that on fund twelve, because this year I budgeted all the subs to the payroll system to make sure I had enough budget there. Last year I had budgeted the lines, and we may or may not have covered all the loads for them. Diesel in twenty-four, our total was ninety thousand, oh, eight, nine, ninety-one. We've only spent seventy-eight thousand so far this year. I don't really understand that because I know it's gone up. So I did budget a little less there. I'm hopeful that those were, you know, real good numbers, because there's not very many other places we can charge diesels. So I feel like it's a pretty good number. Changes, uh, line one oh-two, lines one oh-two through one oh-four, those are agreements that this board or some version of it in prior years has committed through financing. So the first two are related to the energy service agreement. That's the principal interest for the upcoming year. And then that third line, line one oh-four, is where the KZAP bonds to pay this off. Line one oh-five, I did the same thing with all of the special education teachers. I put them all in one line because we were not effectively using the other codes. Lisa and I found several that, like, if you'd ever taught S O B, then that's the code you were in, not necessarily if you moved on to a regular special education classroom. So I kind of fixed that for all of us to make it a little more fluid. And then line one oh-eight is where I brought back in those preschool teachers that were charged about. Uh, we added that special ed teacher to work with ALC last year, mid-year. Well, early in the year, but we didn't have to budget it, so I added that. And somehow the psychologist got, didn't get budgeted correctly last year. So I had to add that one. Last year, there was a coordinator in special education, headed to line one fourteen. That person has since been moved to special education with double dollars. So that's why there's a significant decrease there. Line one eighteen is where I brought in the career center line, so they were not like this last year. Line one nineteen and one twenty was simply where I rearranged because we now have an alternative education teaching principal. So that code is different than a regular alternative education teacher. Um, line one twenty-one is what, one of the differences will be from the budget that you got ahead of time versus the one that you're looking at now. Because I estimated food service, it's one of the things that Joe and I had to work on together. And since I did a lot of this over the weekend and late at night, we hadn't had time to catch up. So it was estimated on your original document, but that is the correct number. And that's, again, a formula, it's a whole spreadsheet that they give us to complete. It's not really, you know, we don't really make that educated guess. They kind of do that for us, about the best of the one percent. All right, we are going to skip lines one twenty-two and one twenty-three for just a couple minutes. So let me go a little bit, go one down. Then line one twenty-four, we did this last year. We just budgeted their public helpers at the same total that, that they have in last year. So that gives the total fund eleven budget of fourteen million, three seventy-four, four seventy-sixty-nine. Any questions about expenses? I'll move on to revenue. So again, we'll skip that first line of revenue because it's out of the expenditures, so can we just move on that? The next line are the taxes that you've already voted on. That's that same number that was on the levy call. Uh, then we have interest, and interest is always for, like, I do my little pluses and minuses for balancing. We actually brought in a hundred thirty-one thousand on levy this year in interest. So I would probably budget around a hundred thirty, but I just kind of keep that one as my, you know, change number. All of the other items except indirect costs are prescribed. And Tony went through the, the different numbers from the state aid. That is the final number for state aid of all of the projects that are unrestricted. Anything we have to transfer around that's unrestricted goes in that line one thirty-six. And then, of course, retirement, elementary schools, the R H V team. There's that retire, uh, uncut retirement liability number again, plus or minus. Um, indirect costs, we have to strike their cost percentage each year, as it's in our document as well. We submit back to the state for their approval, and we use that percentage against the amounts that we're bringing in for federal dollars, uh, with the exception of child attrition. And that totals into that twenty-seven thousand. So like, if it's the percentage this year, I don't have that right in front of me. I don't have how they could get quickly, we need it, but it ended up being like three point seven nine percent. So that comes back to the county for administration of all those grants. Okay, so what we budgeted as carryover is one point seven million dollars. That's literally just a guess. You just, like, I have a spreadsheet that kind of takes some of the numbers of where we are now and subtracts some stuff that we think are coming, and adds some stuff that we think are coming. But that's an educated guess. And then if you go back to spending expenditures on line one twenty-nine, what we do is we put an amount in there to automatically reserve the portion of the carryover that we are not using. And what we did this year is set up some, a lot of local projects that we're going to have to fund. So that means that last year we used four hundred and ten thousand dollars of the carryover. This year we're using more, like, one point four of the carryover. So you're taking the revenue that's coming in, subtracting what I have there in carryover reservation, because we're setting that aside and saying, we're not touching that much of it. And then the rest of that is going through next year's budget. But we talked a lot about it, and my feeling of that is as long as we're doing projects and things that are not ongoing, we're not really living on our savings account. We are using our savings account to do things that we don't need done. So that's the theory behind it. The line right above that, one twenty-two, that is where all of those state aid reservations come from. That's our step seven A, step seven B, all the things that he showed you that were in fund eleven but have their own project, that's where they are, as well as the local projects, which we'll go into here in just a second. Okay, we ready to move on to home model?
So would the storage building be in the, uh, reserved?
Well, it's actually already funded, completely funded. So, well, it was within twenty-five thousand, so I consider that fully funded. So no, it's not happening to us at all.
That would be in fifty-one's, fifty-one, right?
It's actually in eleven because it was a local project that was just set aside there.
Oh, that's right.
So, um, but it will eventually be part of carryover, but not part of the estimate I did. Because the estimate, I didn't include anything that we already had set aside. All right, I'm ready to move to fund twelve if you are.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so what we do with fund twelve, and again, this is excess levy, something that I really haven't worked with a lot. But the way it was explained to me is we take the grand total that was supposed to come in from the excess levy, which is the amount you voted on. One million, seventeen thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. And we essentially strike a percentage based on the original levy call. So the original levy call showed twenty-seven percent, and I have those amounts down there in the revenue. Um, twenty-nine percent in the one that's for maintenance of facilities, thirty-one percent for instructional support, and then forty percent for the extracurricular and substitutes. So then I just translated that into some expenditures that qualify under those various projects and, um, different lines because there will be different things. So the first project, which is our maintenance and facilities project, you know, I have your, um, custodial and maintenance supplies in there. Pardon the electric bill, which I told you that was really high, so it went in both places. Our lawn maintenance and state removal, which you've already approved that contract for next year, so I was able to budget that directly from the contract. Then the next project, that's the one that's labeled nine nine one oh one, that's the instructional project. That's where we get all the instructional supplies for the staff, um, science, you know, whatever they need for their classrooms, that's pretty much where that comes from, as well as textbooks. Uh, there are, there, there is a little bit of textbook money in some of the other funding, like step seven, but this is kind of like a supplemental to add to it. Because there's years when we have to scrape up every penny we've got. This is not one of those years that is a lighter adoption here, but it does happen. In the levy call was a commitment to four H for twenty-five thousand, and that's what line fifteen is. Then when you get to project nine nine one oh two, pretty much all of that is budgeted for substitutes. And then there was a line for facility rental, which we hope to eliminate with one of the local projects. And we'll move on to that now if there's no questions on fund twelve.
Question. With the textbooks for the high school, we only ordered half as many as typically, right? Those, for those, because you only need half as many next year.
You mean because of defining enrollment?
No, ma'am.
Or?
Because.
Oh, because of the dual, the block scheduling?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I don't think that that's been completed yet. Sharon is thinking that she's still working on textbooks. And did they see that tonight, or is that June? Is textbook adoption on there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you'll see, yes, she's evaluated that. Ms. West is in charge of the textbooks.
Right, but that would affect your.
Well, this, like I said, this is just a little piece of the textbook money. The other money, it will be budgeted in step seven, and you haven't seen that yet. Those will come through on the white transfer forms because right now we just budget to the project.
Okay.
So yes, that, you're absolutely right. We will have to adjust those numbers based on block scheduling. Okay, so go back to the first page. Sorry, I told you this was a different, but it was still right, so top row is two individual parts. So you'll see that first line where it says fund eleven and then county. Right next to it is about fourteen million that we just wanted to run in fund eleven. And then down below the fund eleven, it says fund twelve, and that is the grand total that we just wanted for an excess levy. So we're not going to talk about those two, we're going to talk about everything else. And I'm going to skip the top section again because I know we'll spend more time on it. So what we did with the fund sixty-one budgets, the state sent out an email to federal programs directors and to treasurers and said, we don't know what the allocations are going to be. Uh, they did give us an allocation for Title I that they felt pretty good about, and that was like at the ninth hour, though, we just got that this past week. So Title I is the only one that we feel like is probably going to be the number it is. Everything else is a guess in it based on what they told us, a guess in it based on last year's number, or a guess in it of last year's number less twenty percent, because that was the other number they gave us that it might be reduced by. So we put those numbers in there, and then you will get, as the year progresses and as these things are actually budgeted, you will get transfer forms where we've taken it out of this holding line and actually put it in the lines we're going to spend it. The only thing we do right now is budget the salaries. And you don't see that on this paper, it just goes on behind the scenes. So like, for example, if we have salaries budgeted in CIS, which we do, you will see that total, and then I'm budgeting that to the salary lines that are already committed by you with the votes of who we've retained, et cetera. So all of those are just our normal projects. I did budget several more projects than I did last year. I just felt like it was less confusing to go ahead and get them in there. Then we know they're coming. Um, things that were iffy, I didn't put in here, so we pretty much have confirmation on most of these that we are getting something, and some of them even the amounts. Do you have any questions about fund sixty-one? So when you get to the personnel agenda later and you're asked to rescind those riffs, every one of those that he's brought to you, we have double-checked with the grantor to make sure the availability, availability of the grant is the same, that we still would qualify, and that the funding level is still approximately the same, or that we can live with the reduction if that happened. Because that's why he had to do that, because we just didn't know. Okay, so now we're back up to fund eleven. Some of these are wishless items, some of these are things that you guys have asked for. Some of them are directors, you know, comments that, gosh, this really needs to happen. Is there a way we can make this happen? So all of these that you see here, most of them, you also saw over there in the expense in fund eleven when we did it because they have to transfer into these projects. So we're just taking it out of the big bucket of money and putting it into these individual buckets. Project Connect is already in salaries, that's where that goes. Handing them, we budget salaries and some supplies, and that, like, those are some of the. larger, but not larger, us projects. We do around here, painting, some things like that go with Handyman. There's money there set aside for jam. That's in addition to whatever was carried over. Line 10, we put money in there to renovate the ALC, to separate that as, as been reflected, and potentially add weights to a weight room as a temporary housing until the vault can come to fruition. Line 11 is three vehicle purchases. Right now, just based on discussion, we have that two in maintenance and one in transportation. But that would be evaluated after the first of the year, you know, age, mileage, how they're actually running, things like that. And then we hope maybe next year to do a couple more and really get our fleet in good shape, and then try to keep that cycle going, where we're not, you know, try to buy them all in one year and and having people ride around and things that may or may not be in period. So line 12 is what Dr. Minnie's been working on to get us semi-permanent facility rentals, so we have nice facilities for our sports teams. Line 13 is because there are potholes that eat the Prius at the high school. Other vehicles maybe too, but certainly Prius. Line 14 is some money for, toward the vault. Line 15, that is actually, that's not a local project. That's set up that way and was set up that way way before I got here. But that is Save the Children early steps. So that is actually a salary, and there's some supply money that's up there, and that comes to us directly from Save the Children. And then you'll see those ones that we talked about, that the state allows us to set aside, but tells us to use however we want. And that's Step 7 bus, Step 7 B, and Step 7 C. So anything and everything is on the table. I'm just giving you what I got. And you can discuss now, or you can put your vote in discuss, you can ask whatever you want.
Questions?
I pulled a lot of numbers.
I know, I'm sorry. It was very boring.
I, I do, I want to say, I appreciate Ginger has filled a lot of gaps here, and with the explanation beside each line item, it makes it very handy to see exactly what we have and what we've budgeted, and and I think that we're getting closer and closer to a really good budget.
Looks very thorough.
We, we do have a lot of projects, but I, I will advise you this. I don't think with the political climate, it's good to sit around with $3 million or $4 million. We, we need to spend the money. We're the smallest, we're the smallest district in the state, and when we're sitting with lots of, lots of funds out there, somebody's liable to see, see that we're not actually using those and not putting them towards the students.
Well, that's talk for another day.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions for Ginger? Hearing none. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ginger.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have the utmost respect for someone that can look at that all day long.
All right, we have no delegation Lisa at this time. All righty, we have no student recognition. Uh, and that'll move us to Calhoun-Gilmore Career Center Administrative Council. Mr. Barton?
Well, I'll tell you something, it's real quick. The, uh, had their graduation awards ceremony the other day, and Dr. Minnie and myself and Mr. Fox were there, and it was, it was very nice. If I counted right, Dr. Minnie, you correct me, I think five of the six top scholarships, we, we were the recipients thereof. So our kids did quite well. Their summer academy is June 3rd and 4th. They're supposed to have their handbook ready on the 11th, which is our next council meeting, to have it for approval, so. The electrical in gentleman that we hired that resigned, we posted the job and did not have any takers, so we have Plan, Plan B, and we're looking to set up a scenario that would be beneficial to them, Calhoun High School and Gilmore County High School. So once that comes into being, then I can address it a little more, but it would be able to put our kids like days of yesteryear in a sense back out to, in a workplace and have a supervisor.
Anything else, Mr. Barton?
No, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Barton.
All right, that'll move us into the consent agenda. We'll start with the approval of the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 12, 2025.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 12, 2025. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, Ginger, where the bills, bills for payment?
Okay, um, most of them were normal bills. I do apologize to you, we won. Add-on bill, um, that I read on your, according to your topics today. We had, we found that we had missed one. It actually got like nine people and did not get paid, and the vendor called while emailing. And when we realized that, since it was a lower dollar amount, we really didn't want to wait another two weeks. So that's why we're asking that you go ahead and pay that as well. Those are for April services.
Make a motion to approve the bills for payment.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the bills for payment. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, Ginger, on to the April 2025 cash report.
Okay, so this is, I'm of April 30th. This is the one we agreed to do monthly as per the requirements of state code, simply cash. It just is what it is. It's not, there's no account payout or accounts receivable in there. It's just what we have in the bank and where it is.
So it is allocated in certain places, though?
Oh, yeah. Basically, everything we just went through.
Yeah, funnel, all kinds of, yeah, yeah, just making sure we're on the same page.
Make a motion to approve the April 2025 cash report as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the April 2025 cash report as presented. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right. That will move us to approval of the FY '26 budget. Dr. Minnie?
Um, I recommend making a motion to approve the FY '26 budget as presented earlier.
So moved.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the FY '26 budget as presented. Is there any further discussion or amendments to this item? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, approval of milk bid. Dr. Minnie?
Um, you have a letter in there that came from Mr. Fraser, and it's a recommendation about accepting United Dairy's Incorporated Milk Bid to be our milk vendor for the 2025-26 school year. Uh, the milk bids were sent out to United Dairy, the Gallagher Dairy Company, Potomac Farms Dairy, and Broughton Foods. United Dairy was the only bid Gilmore County Schools received. United Dairy has been Gilmore County School vendor for several years now. It's been excellent to work with, and I recommend making a motion to approve United Dairy as our milk vendor in the amount of uh, $237,811 for the 25-26 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to accept superintendent's recommendation to accept United Dairy Incorporated to be our milk vendor for the 25-26 school year with a bid of $237,811. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion?
That's a lot of milk.
It sure is. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, Dr. Minnie, approval of ALC plan?
The ALC plan there is attached. Um, we tried to give you a few days to, to look over that. Not a whole lot has changed. A little bit about the team. We'd have a teacher slash special ed teacher, a tenorate special ed teacher, and a teacher slash administrator that would be leading that program. Of course, we'd need to hire an aide too as well on that program. I'm going to have to get permission to post that probably at the next board meeting. But you can see, um, that, uh, you know, most of it's the same. It's up for up to 10 students. Not much difference in what we've done in the past. It's going to be pretty much similar program. And, um, we, we have a appropriate curriculum for high school level and elementary level, and all of that stuff is built in, and we would be sending this to the state, so I recommend making a motion to approve the 26 ALC plan as presented.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to accept superintendent's recommendation to approve the 2026 ALC plan as presented. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion?
A part, a part of a lot of that change was just separating the ages of kids.
Yeah, well, one of the things that we would like to do, and not just for the renovation of, of a possible temporary weight room, but I would like to be able to have them in two separate rooms anyways. I think that's more appropriate to have high school age kids on one side, uh, elementary or middle school age on the other, so um, that would be a, a small adjustment. It's not a, it's not a requirement of this plan, but we plan to make that adjustment anyways. It's not, um, really, you know, the, the type of student in there, you don't want a 17-year-old expelled kid with a student that's having behavior problems at eight. Um, so, uh, those are some of the changes that we're going to do anyways next year. And should be good changes that will impact that program, I think, in a positive way.
No more.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, on to approval of social studies textbook adoption. Dr. Minnie?
Ms. Weston, textbook adoption committee have met and made recommendations to the faculty senate. The school faculty senate's voted to adopt. Uh, the teacher-created materials for kindergarten through 5th grade social studies. The CINGAAGE for 6th and 7th grade social studies. Gallupade for West Virginia Studies. Um, 8th grade CIN, CIN, CINGAAGE for high school social studies 9 through 12. The HMH Geography Textbooks currently being used for instruction, and it also meets the criteria. So I would recommend making a motion to approve the adoption of the teacher-created materials list for K through 5 social studies. CIN, CINGAAGE for 6th through 7th social studies. Gallupade for West Virginia Studies 8th grade. CINGAAGE for 9 through 12 socie, social studies, and HMH for geography, as recommended by those
So moved.
Teachers.
Second.
And textbook committee.
All righty, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the superintendent's recommendation to approve the adoption of teacher-created materials for 5, for K-5 social studies. CINGAAGE for 6th, 7th grade social studies. Gallupade for West Virginia 8th grade. CINGAAGE for 9, 12 social studies, and HMH for geography as recommended. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion?
My question goes back to, like before. Is there, we're taking into account the number that we actually need?
This isn't the actual allocated amount. This is just approving the curriculum.
Okay.
So this would be just, what we're approving is what the textbook company recommended. So what we buy with that, we'll have to figure out numbers and what we buy with that
No problem.
at a later date.
Any other discussion?
But with that being said, we're looking, hopefully, hopefully we get 20 per grade level. It's, it's, it really depends. There's not a lot of kids that take a ton of those history courses, but we could have up to 20 in each 11th and 12th grade class, so it could be 40 books different.
Right, which is
Well, 40 times, that's a lot of money. The books are expensive.
All righty, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, approval of pre-K textbook. Dr. Minnie?
Ms. Weston, textbook with auction committee have met and made recommendations to each faculty senate. The school faculty senate voted to adopt Teaching Strategies Creative Curriculum for Preschool. And I recommend making a motion to approve Teaching Strategies Creative Curriculum for Preschool as recommended.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to accept the superintendent's recommendation to approve Teaching Strategies Creative Curriculum for preschool as recommended. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, approval of amendment to the E Extended School Year Speech Contract. Dr. Minnie?
These are just amendments that, um, that I think that some of them are going to have to be made for us to be able to offer the speech services this summer. The date changed April 1st to June 1st. Increase a half day per week for direct in-person face-to-face services and up to a half day of indirect services to one day per week direct in-face person, in-person face-to-face and one day indirect services. One of the things in there that was omitted is the contractor's responsibility to agree to carry the workers' compensation coverage or the equivalent for themselves in case of injury on our property. And, um, so those changes have been made in the, um, in the document, and this would be a recommendation, um, to make a motion to approve the amended ESY, which is Extended School Year. This is our summer speech people, speech contract as presented.
So moved.
Second. Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded uh, to accept superintendent's recommendation to approve the amended Extended School Year Speech Contract as presented. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion?
No, I'm just glad you're going to have that for the summer, because like, say, since I've been here, it's a very important asset to have in our school system, so.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, approval of Gilmore County High School schedule. Dr. Minnie?
I don't know how deep you want to get involved in this schedule. It's, um, it's a complex issue, but, um, I got both the time schedule and some, some pros there of what a, what we, what we're referring to as the Flex Modified Block Schedule. Um, it's a five-period day. One period would be 40 minutes. The rest of them are all 83 minutes long. Of course, this puts us back onto a block, so the, the, the students have a longer length of time. And what this really, what the need of this really came from was the length of time specifically in middle school that we could provide reading and math instruction. And we see, we have seen some really good numbers, um, some really good growth numbers with the inclusion of our interventionists. We think if we get a longer period of time with that, we're going to see some really, really good math numbers, any LA numbers. So, uh, you, you've got both a, a time schedule, what students would be doing on the day. They start at, uh, 8:05, um, 8:05 to 9:26 is their first block, 9:29 to 10:50 is their second block. At 10:53, they go, um, middle school goes to lunch. High school will have a traditional-style homeroom. 11:25 to 11:55, high school has a lunch, and middle school go to homeroom. Then we come back out, and everybody's back in an academic block from 11:58 to 11:19. And again, 122 to 243. That fourth block, um, and the reason for the fifth block is we have 6th grade there now. And in order to offer the three rounds of gym, we need three sections. So there's a split block there where high school students would remain in their fourth period and do their normal work. And a bell would ring in the middle of that, and then our rotational start at the end of the day for our middle school students. And those middle school students would start a rotational that, some of them would go to gym, some of them would go to music, some of them would go. But 6th, 7th, and 8th grade all filter through a rotational from 120, from 1... 40, 243. one, 40, 243 to 326. So that's the, that's the kind of the gist of the day. And then, of course, I don't know if you want to go, it's kind of hard to see, but I'll zoom in here and you can see our, our orange classes are kind of where our special education students are located. Our blue classes are honors, which are our dual credit. And we have tried to stagger these where they're not offered at the same time. Now, you'll see some of them, some of them are 12th grade recommended courses like English 12. And then you'll see some that are environmental 101, all recommended to take 11th grade. This is the only one we've changed since we put that. We put this down here where it's not going to affect any of these. This was a free block. This is, this is kind of a, it's this fourth, it's this fourth period right here. You see there's none offered fourth? That's where the grow your own, we have to keep it intact. So we've moved it actually since this to right here under work base.
So it's not going to, doesn't look like it's going to affect college credits then?
We, this schedule allows us to offer more un, un, more protected college courses than we have probably ever offered there. With the time, you know, you, you might hear somebody say, well, I couldn't, my kid couldn't get into these classes. These classes are staggered, and the reason why they couldn't get in is because usually they wanted to take something else, and that becomes a student decision.
You and I both know every time you offer a singleton, your life gets really complicated. And if a child is taking multiple singletons, they're very fortunate if they get the majority of them, just for the nature of the beast. So when I went through it, I didn't see, like you said, unless they have a choice between, I want a class and this class, and they'd have that regardless.
They're going to have that. A person can, a person has to make some decisions, just like you, everybody did when they went to college, they had to decide, you know?
They have to do that.
You just have to. And so to eliminate some of this congestion, fifth period, we have moved a class of two of these. And, and you can see all these others that are staggered. This is second semester. You can see there's only one of these dual credits offered first. There's only one of these dual credits offered second. There's only one of these dual credits offered third. There's only one of these dual credits offered fourth. Now, this grow your own is going to change. There's going to be a couple offered, but one of them is, is recommended to take your 12th grade year. One of them's recommended to take the 11th grade year. So I am, I am, I, I really believe that we have done the best we can to separate out as many offerings as we possibly can. And I'm going to be going through this. My son's an eighth grader. I will be happy if he is able to pick up every single one of those classes that's offered. That would put, put money in, that I could put more towards saving for his college later on. It would, it would help. The other thing that we're, that we're planning to do, and we can do this, early entry courses. We've kind of, in the past, traditionally maybe even held students back. We've got a student that, that wants to enter some of their classes early so then they can go take college classes. We've made a prescriptive, it's about 10 courses, isn't it, Ms. West? That we are going to allow. Now, it's not going to be, you can go take your English early. But there is a list of courses that you could go, and the summer between your years, you can go and not just take our summer program for credit recovery, but you could take a geography course and then substitute and take a political science course and a civics course college, and you could obtain more of those credits and have. So hopefully, it will free up anybody that has conflicting schedules, because there's 10 courses. There's a few, two or three that they could take every year. If they truly wanted the course and there was no other option, they could come a few weeks during the summer and take an early interest, entry course and get high school credit for it and take the conflicting dual credit course. So.
Well, like, of course, like I've said before, the, you know, the dual credits are really a huge financial benefit to the kids. You know, Caitlin just graduated in three years from WVU, so that's a whole year we didn't have to pay for.
I am, I'm pretty, I'm, I, I think that this will, if we can stick with, and we plan to at least stick with a block schedule for three years. We haven't done a block for several years. We plan to stick with it to really identify whether or not the block schedule provides the time and the support for students.
And I think we'll get better each year with it.
I will, I will say this from history and past experience. When Yonah County was on the block before, in the nineties, they had, that's when they had their highest ACT converted SAT scores they had and were recognized by S R E B for great improvements in reading and math and received a silver award. So I think it provides everybody much more time and to.
And our middle school kids really need that extra math.
They really do.
I think it's a good move.
Dr. Manning, I guess I'm just asking a clarification question.
Okay.
I see a blue art history line under math. Should that not be under fine arts? Since it's art, history, and whatever?
No. She would actually be teaching art history and speech. Those were two areas that we had, that's that fifth period.
Okay.
And, you know, we didn't, we didn't, we felt like that we could pick up those two that we needed to pick up and not offer a shortened math, because that, that class is only 40 minutes long.
Okay. I just thought it made, it looked like it was out of place.
And some of these, it's a good question. Some of these college classes are proctored because you would have to have a master's in art. We have several teachers though that teach them, but some of them are proctored through GSU.
Yeah.
All right. All right, so do you have a recommendation for that, Dr. Manning?
I recommend making a motion to approve the GCH schedule for the 25, 26 as presented.
So moved.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded. I think I've got a lot of seconds there. To approve the superintendent's recommendation, which is to approve the Gummer County High School's schedule for the 2025, 2026 school year as presented. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, next item, approval of moving graduation date for 2026. Dr. Manning.
So with the state track meet and the boys' baseball and softball potential runs that we could be having next year, and we could be, I did the math today and I looked, we have two potential baseball players that could affect. This is what it currently stands. Now, we could have another 11th grader come out for baseball, but currently we have two baseball players. We have four softball players. We have five girls' track and one boys' track right now. That's, that's currently out. So having it on a day, it could affect, you know, right now, we've got it affecting 11 students if we don't schedule the graduation right. So I, I've been trying to create options with this, and I've thought of a few options. And the first option would be to have a, kind of change our ceremony, and we'd probably have to do an early dismissal. But it would be to incorporate our staff, our whole county staff in our graduation and have it during the school day and really walk our faculty in like a true graduation and have a kind of a more commencement-style ceremony and so on and so forth, and move that to the first available day, which would be May 21st. That would be a Thursday in the afternoon. The cons to that, our people would have to be off work that day. There's no doubt that they'd have to be off work. But I think that we would be able to get, the ceremony itself would be able to be a much more intact ceremony with our faculty being there, our staff being there, and those types of things. If you saw the number of faculty that we had there, there wasn't very many sitting in the teacher section like there used to be. I would personally, I'd like to see those faculty there at the students' graduation. I think it's important to, to be there. I'm, I'm afraid option three will have fewer and fewer people trying to move out there on a Sunday. Or, excuse me, option two. That would be May 24th to hold it after church. Scheduling a ceremony on Sunday afternoon avoids the conflicts with athletic events. It is eating up the weekend though. That's Memorial Day weekend. There's reunions, there's things going on that weekend. There's, people travel to the cemeteries that weekend there. There's a lot of things going on that weekend. And of course, of course, option three would be maintain the current date and putting the students at risk, these 11 students for sure could be put at risk for not moving that date. I've really chewed on this, and, and we don't have to pick a date today. We can table this item. You guys can talk to your constituents. There's no good, easy win-win solution to this. We're going to offend people, I think, one way or the other whenever we move it. The, I'm, I'm interested in option one. We've not done that. I talked to Daniel Reed, and he's kind of our master of ceremonies and Mr. Fox about what they thought. They really, I think, kind of liked the idea. I know that we'll probably get pushback from people having to take the day off of work for that. But graduation is a ceremony. Also don't want to have a ceremony where we don't have a single, you know, where we have only two or three teachers there. It's to, it's to recognize the accomplishments of the graduates and the, and to have a ceremony to celebrate their accomplishment and to award them their diploma. So those are the three options. You know, personally, I'm leaning towards option one. I don't have any strong feelings about any of them though. I do know that if we leave it, I have the schedule here. And we have baseball regionals, the 25th through the 30th. We're currently in this situation right now. We have softball, May 18th through the 23rd, and you can see that would affect, so if we did it Thursday, it can't be in the evening. It'd have to be during the day where they could go. And, and there is plenty of time for them to get where they're going there, I believe. And then track, May 22nd through the 23rd. And that is right in the midst of that option three on that Memorial Day weekend.
I don't have strong feelings. Should we hold the senior parents?
I was just going to say, just what, what does everybody think?
Well, I just, that's what I worry about is, you know, that's a burden on people to take off work. Not everybody's.
I, I hate it on Fridays because like it is a Memorial Day weekend, a lot of people go do things on, like they go camping, they leave Friday. And I think that's why we don't get some people, because they, they leave Friday evening to go set that camp.
The only thought I would have would be to ask, well, the now junior parents.
Yeah.
What they think.
And then I'm totally against Sunday. I'm sorry, but I'm totally against Sunday. That's already, and then you're, you're trying to go right in the middle of a holiday weekend.
Right.
And like that's, I do understand for traveling.
The thing, the thing with, you know, there could be, there could be kids, and there are kids, there are top, there could be a valedictorian sitting on that track team.
There were, there were Saturday when they graduated, when the activities commission walked them across their makeup stage in, in their cap and gown. There were not, I don't know how many valedictorians and soliditorians, because they didn't say, but the accolades they gave them, there had to be, out of the 30 come kids that they handed a diploma to, there had to be several, because they wouldn't have gotten the awards they got. Getting, getting Chuck Edgar scholarship. I've had kids apply for that, and believe me, the person that got that one was, was up there. And there were 30-some kids, and if I counted right, there were six counties that they represented. So the, the other 49 did something. And we had one student who competed at 2 o'clock on Friday. She got done and sat in the parking lot and did not know whether or not she was going to make it back to graduation because they were blocked in. Now, I don't care what day you pick, but not Friday.
Ginger Nicholas County has theirs on Thursday. I know, you know, are you familiar with?
I would say that's the first time I knew that it was a week night.
Okay.
I mean, I, I'm good with whatever. That's the only suggestion I have, is should we ask?
I mean, we don't have to make this decision right now.
No, we can table it. I just wanted to give you some options. You might be able to talk to some people. The problem is, we can't move it to the weeknight because we're going to be right back in the situation with baseball and softball.
Same reason I complain, we're in the same boat, and I won't, I won't push.
That's, that's kind of, that's kind of why I've created the, the option of during the day.
I also kind of like, because then that family should go out to eat afterwards or something like that.
And the, the downfall is to the option during the day. It's hard on working people, but that's why if we did it now, we would have to do it, you know, a year in advance to really be able to give people enough time to say, I need to get this afternoon off.
I'm, I'm fine with whatever. I mean, I, I would at least include the seniors in it.
My, my only worry with Sunday is on the week, I'm afraid we're going to have a smaller graduation. I'm afraid that our kids aren't going to have their, their peers there, their teachers there.
Aunts, uncles.
There, because they're doing whatever else. That's, I'm more worried about. I think, I think, I think we're more likely to see the people take off work and come and be able to have the weekend than not, even though it's not optimal. I don't think any, any way is optimal. The only way around this is to start school earlier or end later.
So just make a motion to postpone it.
Yeah, let's just table it for now.
On later date and.
Let's table it.
After we've discussed with people involved and come back.
Our constituents.
Our constituents.
I give people time to think about it.
So are we having them send down a survey or are we going to discuss?
I mean, I think, I think it's fine just to table it and let people.
Yeah, a survey to the 11th grade class right now wouldn't be a bad idea. It's not a bad idea.
The only thing is, you got six names on there that it would affect in the 11th grade class. How do you know what the other, I mean, the other kids might say, no, we don't, we don't, we don't care if it affects those six kids.
Majority wins, baby.
I think we need a specified motion of what we want. I mean, it sounds like we want to postpone, but what do we want done in, in the meantime?
I mean, I think it's just fine to table it and we'll bring it up next time.
Yeah, I mean, go out and talk to people. If anybody has any thoughts, they can come talk to us and then we'll address it at, I guess, the next meeting.
I will say this, the more we'll talk about it, the more people are going to, you'll, you'll definitely hear about it.
Very true.
You're going to, it's going to create.
Well, the worst thing can happen, we just have it on Friday again, so.
Well, so I make a motion that we postpone, and we revisit it in one month. One month, and that should give the public to enough time to comment or whatever, and then we'll come back and decide.
Is there a second to Dr. Miller's motion?
Second.
Okay, so it's been properly moved and seconded that we postpone this item for one month and then add it back to an agenda at that time. Any further discussion or amendments to that main motion?
I would have been fine with just next meeting.
I really like Thursday, I'm just saying.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, now move this, they have no old business that moves into personnel.
All right, your personnel agenda, this is a professional agenda. Make the recommendation for Tanya Stewart, pre-K, extended school year, and Joanna Stansberry, resignation, expanded school mental health coordinator effective 5/29/25.
Make a motion to approve the professional section of course, personnel agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve a professional section of the personnel agenda. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. On to service.
Service, recommendation for Alexa Klapka, Ecat classroom transportation aide, pre-K, 25, 26 school year.
I make a motion to approve the service portion of the personnel agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second, we approve the service portion of the personnel agenda. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Sorry. All right, we're on to extracurricular. Dr. Manning.
Extracurricular, we've got Nasha Butcher, mentor, assistant principal, Gilmer County Elementary School. David Russell, assistant mini Titan football coach. David Russell, head mini Titan boys basketball coach.
Is the, is Nasha's full-time or?
She's going to be a mentor to an individual principal that we hired back during this year. We've had that job posted for a while and so she's applied for it.
Is that a full-time position?
No, no, it's just a mentor.
Consultation.
Does that override the contract or is that contract?
No, it's separate from the contract. This is just a mentor that we posted internally for one of our folks to pick up. They didn't, Nasha's going to pick that up for us and be the mentor and they meet, you know, sporadically throughout the year for a year while she provides her mentorship.
Make a motion to approve the extracurricular portion of the personnel agenda.
Second. Okay, it's been properly moved in second to approve the extracurricular portion of the personnel agenda. Any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All righty, on to rescinding riffs of 2025, 2026. Dr. Manning.
So I think we're going to do these individually, right?
Yep.
First one, recommendation to rescind riff and reduction in force for the 2025, 2026 school year is Alicia Martin, community and schools liaison.
Make a motion to rescind the riff for Alicia Martin for the 25, 26 communities and schools liaison.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded to rescind the riff of Alicia Martin for community and schools liaison. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, on to the next one.
Next one, rescind reduction in force for the 25, 26 school year, Julie Busby, community and schools liaison.
So moved.
Okay, that'll work. Yep, there's a motion in a second to rescind the riff of Julie Busby, community and schools liaison for the 25, 2026 school year. Any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, on to the next one.
All right. This is recommending to rescind riff, reduction in force for the 25, 26 school year, Brittany Spunogel, community and schools liaison.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second to rescind the riff of Brittany Spunogel as community and schools liaison for the 2025, 2026 school year. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, on to the last one.
And finally, the recension of reduction in force for the 25, 26 school year, Michelle Workman, truancy diversion specialist.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second to rescind the riff of Michelle Workman for the 2025, 2026 school year as truancy diversion specialist. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, on to permission to post.
Asking to, or making the recommendation for permission to post an expanded school year nurse and expanded school year substitute school nurse for the 25 summer program, year 25 summer program in Gilmer County Schools.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second.
I was going to give it to you.
Yeah. To approve the permissions to post of extended school year school nurse and extended school year substitute school nurse. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right. We have no continuous improvement. And then we send superintendent's update.
First, I'm going to make this very quick because I know everybody's ready to get to the baseball game. I want to say congrats to the baseball team. I think they've done an excellent job playing as a team, representing our community. And I just want to say thank you to those coaches and student athletes that are working there to try to make it a reality for us to go to states. One, a quick update, the last day of school for students will be a half-day, three-hour early release. We're going to give them a little break that day and release them early that day. One of the things that I wanted to bring up to you, I will be on vacation, we did this last year, is, and, and I, and if this works, I'll, I'll try to just put it on the calendar, but maybe only do one meeting in June. Just think about it. We can arrange everything to happen June 9th and that way, you know, we don't have people calling in, people going on vacation and things like that. Last year we did that and you gave permission to pay bills through June or July. And, excuse me, so we've got several things going on in the community and that last week of June would be the, the one that I'd be talking about, kind of eliminating. But it's not a, it's not a necessity. We can have it. I could call in and so on and so forth, but we did that last year. We kind of eliminated that last meeting in June. June 2nd at 10:00 AM, we're going to have a staff end of the year celebration. You guys have a flyer for that. I'm going to try to be organizing the cooking for that one this year. So if the food's bad, I'm very sorry. It's what I can afford, so.
I know some caterers have just started.
Not in my budget, you don't. So, you know, I just want to say, we're coming up to the end of the year. We've had a very strong year. We've had very good test score growth. I feel like we've, we've done a very good job as a board this year and I'll give you guys credit for that. Everybody's working together well. These changes that you see, the schedule, you'll see the handbooks. The handbooks are due to me the 10th. You'll see those come before the, long before the beginning, the start of the year. You're going to start seeing these things like early entry, the programming that we're trying to develop that we think will have an impact. We're putting a lot of funds towards intervention and programs like mastery prep and things that'll help our students. So I'm really proud of what we did this year. The bulletins, I already gave you an update. Those weekly bulletins will end. I'll start sending out email updates when I get stuff and superintendent updates and things like that, but it won't be as, as regular and we'll get into the summer season. That's all I've got.
All righty, and it moves into board member comments and we'll start with Mr. Park.
Kudos to the baseball team also on, on playing tonight and what they've done. And congratulations to those students that participated this weekend or last weekend in the state track meet and those that placed, we did have a, a second team place in the four by two, a fifth placed in four by one. The three jumpers tied for seventh. We had Ms. Ms. Hord got sixth in the long jump and we did quite well. They ended up being 14th out of 28 teams.
Right, thank you, Mr. Park and Mr. Frisher.
No real comment, just, you know, just finish strong on the school year. Congratulations to the graduates.
My son is counting down the minutes.
So am I too.
Well, I am too. I'm very proud of all the hard work and unity that the county has shown this year. I, I knew we could do it and it's finally, all the hard work is coming to fruition and we're seeing the benefits of all the great people working for, for one goal in the county. I just, I want to thank all the teachers. I know it's been a lot of upheaval over the last three years, but you know, we're, we're really churning it out now and we're going to see even bigger improvements in the next couple of years to come. So thank you, everyone. Thank you for the students. I, I know they took testing very seriously this year and, and they tried their hardest and I'm proud of them for buckling down. Proud of the state track participants this past weekend. Really proud of the showing that, that Gilmer County is making on the state level and, in all levels, including academics now. So thanks, everyone. Have a great year.
You're all right in there, Mr. Chapman. Yeah. Okay. I'll echo all the sentiments of all the other board members so far. It's good to see all the improvements, you know? Thank you to all the staff. I mean, that budget, Ginger, I don't know how many hours you would have had to put that together, but it was, it was really good. You know, the more we, like I said, just, you know, stay positive and continue with the work that we're doing, the better off we'll be, you know? It, it's good to see all the improvement, again, on academics and then of course, the sports teams having, you know, all their, you know, going to the state level meets and things like that's very important. So I think that we're going in the right direction and we just keep, need to go and keep going on that ball and that path, Mr. Chapman.
I just want to say under the new high school, the administration at the high school, Mr. Fox, I thought did a wonderful job with the graduation. It, it was, it was very, I, I felt like streamlined and everything that was needed, said was said and I, I just enjoyed it actually, believe it or not. Also kudos to the band at graduation. I thought they sounded wonderful.
They did.
The whole time, it was just like elevator music. It was nice, it was real nice.
And with that being said, Titans are down three to one right now. So if everybody say a little prayer for the Gilmer County Titans on this second game of the regionals. That's all I have.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved in second, we adjourn the meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Meeting adjourned.
Sorry about that, Hillary frigging.
You scared me.
Man, they strike three on a frigging inside low strike right there for third.